All right, good afternoon, everybody. Happy Friday. Welcome to a meeting of the Board of Supervisors for the Central Florida Tourism Oversight District. Today is September 12th. The time is 5:05. Do we have a quorum? We do, properly noticed. All right, thank you so much. We have meetings called to order. We do have an invocation on our agenda. Unfortunately, Ian Lord from the Orange County Fire Department is stuck in traffic, so he is still gonna make it. We're gonna get him on the agenda later, but in the interim, I would just like everyone to take the opportunity to reflect in silence. I know yesterday was nine eleven, but we were not gathered yesterday, and so perhaps we can use this time to reflect on all of our fallen citizens on nine eleven and before we start the meeting. Thank you. All right, we're gonna move to the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Krkis, would you lead us, sir?
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Krkis. We have one item on consent agenda, so we're just gonna take it up. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the August twenty-second, twenty twenty-five meeting?
Submit.
Second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Moving on to management report. Ms. Kapalusis, good evening.
Thank you, and thank y'all for being here after five o'clock on a Friday night. That goes for everyone in this room. Just a few items I wanna touch upon. You had mentioned September eleventh, and I am just proud to be part of an organization that that really does remember the things and do the things that are important in life, and I appreciate the fire department taking the lead and doing a nine eleven ceremony yesterday. It was well attended. It was great to have some of our retirees come back for the event. Our pipes and drums, our honor guard, and just the whole team pulled together to make sure that is something that we will never forget. But they took it to the next level yesterday, and led by our battalion chief, Bonta, who put together a a new event for us that in honor of the climbing of the flights of stairs in the World Trade Center buildings, and you see a lot of a lot of fire departments that do this, well, he put together, and we did it in the grapefruit garage, and I am proud to say that seventy-five of our team participated. We had a ton of people that showed up just to cheer everyone on, but it just makes it even more real that we don't forget and just applaud the chief's team and really the whole team, 'cause everyone showed up and participated. It was always a tough day, but it is it is something that I appreciate, the fact we continue to do things so that we can all just remember and be together and just think about how blessed we truly are to live in this country. On a on a financial note, on the May twenty-third board meeting, we asked y'all to approve us looking at financing options for our utility department and for the needs that we have to the tune of about a hundred and seventy-five million. Half of our team is here today on the financial side, and we appreciate them being here. The team has been working hard. We're looking at doing a bond issuance in October, late October, early November. The goal would be to have a resolution to y'all at the October board meeting to do that. What I wanted to give everyone a heads up on is, as part of this process, to get the word out that we are looking at going to the bond market, we are gonna go ahead and officially announce that on EMA, which is the Electronic Municipal Market Access, so that everyone knows that we'll be going to the market, and it just kinda sets the tone of of what we have coming out and the timeline on that. So once again, we'll bring a resolution to y'all in October, but the team is working hard. I appreciate Heidi and Susan for all the work they're doing. Roy, I think, is having a lot of fun. But just wanted to kinda update everyone on where we are with that. That is all I have, and thank y'all for being here.
Thank you, Ms. Kapalusis. Any questions for the administrator? All right, seeing none, we're gonna, yes?
I don't think we asked for public comment on the general business.
Thank you. We'll take that up now. Appreciate that. There's so much public comment in this meeting. I'm sure it's not gonna be the first time I miss it. So we're gonna take item four out of order. Thank you, Mr. Payne. Is there any public comment? All right, seeing none. Very fast item. All right, we're gonna move on to item seven, general business. Item seven point one is a motion to approve the award, I'm sorry, recommendation to approve the award of contract C zero zero six eight three zero for landscape maintenance of canals, levees, and water control structures throughout the district to Superior Landscaping and Lawn Services, Inc., and authorizing the administrator to execute the contract. Ms. Burns, good evening. I wanna say good morning, but it's good evening. I almost said the same thing. Good evening.
Chair Yarborough, fellow members of the board, district administration. Yes, I'm here on behalf of the district's facilities department to seek award of contract C zero zero six eight three zero, which, a quick background on that is it will provide landscape clearing and maintenance services to twenty canals, adjacent levees, and some water control structures dispersed over about three hundred and eighty-six acres of district property. Let's see here. And the primary purpose of this is to provide unobstructed access or routes to all the parties that have to perform regulatory inspections that meet their state obligations. Also, this service will provide some visual impact, since quite a few of these are located in high visible district roadways, and for the visitors and surrounding communities, this will just give a nice look. The scope of services, they will include mowing frequencies that will match the growing and dormant seasons that we have here. A scheduled yearly cutback of our wood lines will address the fluctuations that we have in the different types of growth. The documented litter control will be there to prevent contamination and/or blockage to the waterways. As far as the proposal results, we did have the district received eight bids after posting an invitation, and Superior Landscape and Lawn Service, Inc. provided the lowest bid, and they were able to meet all of our required certifications. And to wrap up with the funding, our facilities department is requesting the approval of contract C zero zero six eight three zero to be issued to Superior Landscape and Lawn Service, Inc. by the board for a term of three years with a contract value of eight hundred thousand dollars, and there is an option for two renewals for this agreement.
And that's basically it. Thank you, Ms. Burns. Are there any questions? We have a motion to approve item seven point one. Second? Discussion, all in favor? Aye. Thank you, Ms. Burns, appreciate it. All right, we are now into the public hearing portion of our meeting today. The purpose of the public hearing is to read the resolutions relating to the tentative millage rate, a resolution relating to the tentative budget, and a resolution relating to the tentative utility budget. We are gonna start off, if you all recall, our CFO last month presented to us budget, tentative budget and tentative millage rates at the time. I'm gonna yield the floor to her so she can go over those items before we undertake items eight point one and eight point two. So you have the floor, ma'am.
Yes, thank you. Actually, in August, we had the budget workshop, and we didn't approve anything. It was informational, but tonight, we're gonna be looking at the tentative budget and the tentative millage and taking a vote. There's the tentative budget. We have the same assessed values as we've had in July and August, seventeen point seven billion dollars, and that is over the prior year of sixteen point three billion dollars. That's an eight point eight seven percent increase in our assessed values. And you can see the breakdown between Orange and Osceola County. For our millage rate, our tentative millage rate is twelve point four two three six. That is an overall decrease from our millage rate in the prior year of thirteen point zero eight three. Debt service going from four point one seven mills to three point eight four mills, and our operating millage rate going from eight point nine one three to eight point five eight three six. When we're looking at our operating millage rate, we are required to compare that to the rollback rate. The rollback rate is the calculated millage rate that would provide the same amount of revenues as prior year, taking into account allowing for new construction. So our operating millage rate of eight point five eight three six is two point one three percent above our rollback rate of eight point four oh four six. This is a slide of our total revenues. There's been no change since the budget workshop, two hundred and twenty million dollars in total revenue, with our largest portion being revenue from Advalorm taxes of two hundred and twelve million. We did increase our permit and fees from five point seven million to six million, just anticipation of additional revenue in the building and permit side. For our expenditures, we have a slight change from what we sent, displayed at the workshop. Our other expense has increased three hundred and sixty thousand. Our public works department was recalculating their roll forwards, and they wanted to add an additional two hundred and thirty thousand roll forward for the drainage structure, S four oh five, and a hundred and thirty thousand dollars for planned work. The drainage structure is covered by the transfer end of the five point four million dollars. So for your labor, we do have an additional seven positions net, four in building and safety, two in the comm center, two in fire prevention, one in facilities maintenance for project management, and we closed two positions in admin. We've accounted for annual increases for all employees, and since the district does participate in the Florida retirement system, we have increases for the district's contribution amount, a one percent increase for all regular class, and a two point four percent increase for all special class. And the two point four percent for special class is about forty-nine percent of the workforce. For other expense. Okay, I'm gonna finish.
I'll do a close.
Okay, yeah. For other expense, this is the, I talked about the change we had. Also, this is the budgeted line item that we have our planned work in. So usually, year over year, a lot of the regular other expense items are pretty much the same. Stagnant planned work is the area where we have projects and things that come along that drive the budget to increase. So items to mention, for our IT department, we have a implementation in the building and safety department of Relay IVR, which allows for texting capabilities between the contractors and the building and safety department. Also, an upgrade to Acela, their overall permitting system, and that will be cloud-based. And then for facilities, we have this building, the admin tenting, replacing that. Also, direct capture exhaust for fire station two. We have bay doors, replacement and lighting in fire station one. For the garage, we have work for the elevators, restriping, height bar replacements. And then our biggest one is in public works, we have two drainage, the S four oh five, which is rolling over, and the S four oh five A. Both of these are fifty-five-year-old structures and drainage. That portion is funded from drainage reserve. And then we have milling and resurfacing, eight million, guardrails of one million, and then we're rolling over overhead trust replacements, traffic signal replacements, and our master drainage model. Then looking at our capital, this does include our two point three million for the fire department's apparatus replacement schedule, and some additional funds to purchase ten of our vehicles that we are currently leasing. We want to purchase those and add those to our fleet. And then the five point four coming in, that's all of the drainage projects that qualify for the outside drainage funds will be reimbursed. We currently have a balance of seven and a half million dollars in there, so we have enough to cover this transfer. For debt service, sixty-six million dollars. This is scheduled debt service for all the way to twenty thirty-seven, without making any changes to our debt, no change from the prior year. So in twenty-five, it was sixty-six as well. This is why we're able to lower our millage rate because of our increased assessed values. Tax collector fee, small increase of twenty-eight thousand, and then our overall insurance went up two hundred thousand. And then looking at our ending fund balance, we budgeted for an ending fund balance in twenty-five of forty-one point seven million, and in twenty-six, we're anticipating an ending fund balance of forty-eight and a half million. And this covers all of our fund balance policy requirements of two million dollars in our emergency repair and placement, replacement. We set money aside, the two point three nine five for the fire apparatus, an increase to our property appraisal settlement by one million of six and a half to seven and a half, and that's just a set aside. And then the thirty-six million that's left, that covers our required two months' worth of operating expenditures, because we don't receive our tax income until December.
And I just wanna bring it to a higher level and talk about while we lowered the millage, we are asking you for a tax increase, and I wanna just put it in perspective of why we are. If you look at just in the past year, and the agreements that we now have in the comp plan, also in the developers' agreement, there's gonna be somewhere between ten and probably fifteen billion dollars of investment within our boundaries. And when you look at that, we have to be able to keep up with what that looks like. So I think that's the biggest. I mean, you just look at the convention space that's being constructed at the Swan and Dolphin. You look at what the Disney Company has announced as the new lands that are coming in those projects, but you look at a lot of the hotels, and they're reconfiguring and reconstructing a lot of their rooms, so it is a lot coming our way. When you look at our estimate of number of permits that we expect to increase, we're looking at somewhere between ten to fifteen percent increase in permits. Now, keep in mind, a lot of that, we've been working on now. But when you look at inspections, the building department is estimating close to like forty percent increase in inspection, so we've gotta be able to keep up with what's going on in the district. But Susan talked about the planned work, and I consider that kind of the keeping up with the growth, but also for our district, is the care and feeding of the infrastructure that we have today. And when you look at that, we have a twenty percent increase in our planned work. So that's an additional two million for paving. That's really just keeping up. You look at Douglas and the number of buildings he's maintaining and some of the challenge we've had. We've increased that so we can try to get some of these projects done, as well as the two larger drainage projects that we have coming our way. So when you look at just, and I don't wanna call it aging infrastructure, but a lot of our infrastructure has been here since day one, and it's we've gotta do the right thing by keeping up with this, so we can continue to see this district prosper as our taxpayers want it to, but also as this community needs it to.
Thank you, Ms. Kapalusis. Thank you, Ms. Higginbotham. Before we move to any board comments, I'd like to go to item eight point one. Is a recommendation that the board approve a tentative millage rate, resolution number six seven five. Would you please read the resolution, Ms. Higginbotham?
Yes, a resolution of the Central Florida Tourism Oversight District adopting the tentative millage rate for the levying of Advalorm taxes for fiscal year twenty twenty-six and providing an effective date. The Central Florida Tourism Oversight District, through its Board of Supervisors, hereby adopts a tentative operating millage rate of eight point five eight three six mills for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-six, which is two point one three percent more than the rollback rate of eight point four oh four six mills, computed pursuant to Florida statutes two hundred dot zero six five, and that the Central Florida Tourism Oversight District, through its Board of Supervisors, hereby levies a debt service millage rate of three point eight four mills for fiscal year twenty twenty-six, thereby levying a total rate of twelve point four two three six mills for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-six.
Thank you, Ms. Higginbotham. Mr. Payne, any issues with the reading?
Not at all.
Okay, thank you. The floor is open to the public for comment on this item. Do we have any members of the public that wish to comment? Seeing none, the floor is now open to board members who wish to comment. Would anybody like to wish to comment? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve item eight point one?
Submit.
Second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Oh, roll call, sorry. Any opposed? Oh, roll call, sorry. We need a roll call. Go ahead, Ms. Kapalusis. Would you do a roll call, please?
Yes. Supervisor Ziegler?
Yes.
Vice Chair Anx?
Yes.
Chair Yarborough?
Yes.
Uh, yes. Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Kapalusis. All right, we are now moving on to item eight point two. It's a recommendation. Yes, ma'am.
Can we go ahead and interrupt and do a?
Uh, sure. Hi, are you Mr. Lord?
Yes.
Thank you for joining us, sir.
I apologize for being late.
It's okay. The, the traffic is crazy. The weather's crazy. Thank you for coming. Thank you, thank you. Um, you can go to the podium, sir. Um, we, we did a moment of silence during the invocation part. So if we could, um, beg upon you to do a benediction at this point, would that be nice?
Good evening, everyone. Heavenly Father, we just wanna thank you for the Oversight District Board and just continue to give them knowledge, wisdom and discernment in the job that they have and the task that they have at hand, Lord. We also wanna pray for our first responders, continue to place a hedge of protection over them, Father. Guide them each and every day as they go out to serve the public and help them return home safely to their families. We ask this in your holy, precious name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Lord. Really appreciate you coming. Be careful driving later as well. It's a Friday afternoon, crazy out there. All right, we are now on item eight point two, which is a recommendation that the board approve a tentative budget, resolution number six seven six. I would ask our CFO, would you please read resolution six seven six?
A resolution of the Central Florida Tourism Oversight District adopting a tentative budget for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-six and providing an effective date. The Central Florida Tourism Oversight District set forth the appropriations and revenue estimate for the tentative budget for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-six in the amount of two hundred and eighty million, three hundred and twelve thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars.
Okay. Mr. Payne, reading was accurate?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Uh, the floor is open to the members of the public to comment on resolution number six seven six. Do we have any comment from the public? Seeing none, the floor is open to board members who may comment. Any comment from the board?
I would just like to say, um, thank you, Susan. I know you've worked tirelessly, um, not just on the budget, but the millage. We didn't comment on the millage, but, um, it has been, uh, yeoman's work on your part. Very much appreciate you. Also appreciate our entire leadership team because you don't determine all of the numbers by yourself. Um, and so it takes a lot of work from our entire team to make sure that we are being cost-effective and efficient and making the right investments so that we can hedge against risk in the future. Um, I just have a few call-outs. I know we did at the workshop, uh, some of them, but again, the chief. Um, Chief Farrar, thank you so much for, um, really trying to establish a long-term, um, plan for modernizing and, um, maintaining, um, equipment for our fire department that we're not waiting until it's broken to figure out when it's time to replace it and really kind of not just foreseeing in the future what we need, but also how we're gonna pay for it. So deeply appreciate that. Um, Douglas Henley at facilities, I know you have undertaken a lot, uh, with respect to some additional facilities that are aging. And it has been, um, complex to do the assessment and ascertain, uh, the needs of our, um, infrastructure and how to maintain it in a way and prioritize where we're investing our dollars and, and ensuring that we're protecting our, um, our facilities assets. So deeply appreciate everything you're doing. I know it probably doesn't get noticed in these meetings a lot, so I wanna make sure we make the point to thank you today. Um, Jason, Catherine and Craig. Um, also, there's a theme here. Everyone is really looking long-term, which is deeply appreciated. I'm sure I speak for all of us up here. Um, but Jason, Catherine and Craig, with the, um, capital improvement plan, you have completed, I think, almost all of your projects on time, uh, which I know creates a lot of happiness for Susan, not having to deal with rollover. Um, but it also saves us money. So it's more than just a hassle for our CFO to have to deal with rollover. But getting things done on time means that they're more cost-effective and, and allows us to have, uh, resources available to other needs within the district. So deeply appreciate all of you for your leadership on that. Um, so I, I don't know if there are any other comments? No? All right, seeing none. Uh, let me make sure we are where we are. Okay, motion. I'm on motion. All right. Is there a motion to approve item eight point two, which is resolution six seven six?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Um, any discussion? We will do a roll call, boo.
Supervisor Gilbert?
Yes.
Supervisor Workman?
Yes.
Chair Yarborough?
Yes.
Vice Chair Anx?
Yes.
And Supervisor Ziegler?
Yes.
We are now on item eight point three. Eight point three is a recommendation that the board approve the tentative utility budget, resolution number six seven seven. Before we get to the resolution, I believe Chris Farrar is going to talk to us about the utility budget, the tentative utility budget. Good evening. How are you, ma'am?
Good evening. Thank you so much. Appreciate the opportunity to present the tentative utility budget. Let me start by saying that the information for fiscal twenty-six is unchanged to the preliminary information shared during the budget workshops in August. But because it's super fun, we can talk about the utility cost base, uh, quickly. So this is a base-up roll-up. Come on, y'all, I'm gonna get you one of these days. This is super fun. Um, so we do start each year with the base-up budget build and you'll look at the differences in this slide from twenty-five to twenty-six in those, uh, base costs. It is a five point five percent increase from the cost base of fiscal twenty-five, a twelve point three million dollar increase. There are four primary drivers of this increase in fiscal twenty-six. The first being purchased power and fuel, where we are seeing, uh, a little bit more volatility in the commodity market, some expiry of contracts and price changes associated with costs for energy and capacity. Our labor costs are primarily driven by the RCES, uh, CEPTAN Labor Services Agreement increase for expanded scope of services provided to the district. Operating expenses are going up at an inflationary cost. Uh, and then we have an increase as a common theme here in our planned work expense budget, making sure we're doing critical maintenance items on the utilities' assets. Also, Ms. Kapalusis has already discussed the debt service cost and the proposed issuance of one hundred and seventy-five million dollars in utility revenue bonds. And that debt service cost increase is flowing through from twenty-five to twenty-six. After we roll up the utility costs, we look at things that may offset those cost requirements in the fiscal year. There are three offsets to the utility cost base in fiscal twenty-six as described on this slide and discussed in the budget workshops that total over eighteen million dollars. So we started our base cost base of two hundred and thirty-four point eight million requirement, subtract those offsets and come up with an amount of two hundred and sixteen point five million dollars that we need to recover in fiscal year twenty-six through utility sales to customers across the district's eight utilities. Now we look at each individual utility and what those cost requirements are so we ensure that each utility is collecting revenue sufficient to support, uh, the utility system. So of that, um, we're going from a cost base in twenty-five by utility of two hundred and eight point eight million to two hundred and sixteen point five million, a fifteen point seven percent increase and seven point eight percent overall. Uh, there are some increases coming up in chilled water, sewer and hot water. They are directly related to debt service costs assigned to those utilities for improvements in projects that benefit that utility or planned work capital or planned work expense projects within the year that also benefit that utility. Finally, the rate recommendation for the district, the overall rate recommendation for fiscal twenty-six is, uh, one point seven percent. Happy to announce that that is below an inflationary increase across the district's utilities. There are variances by individual utilities related to cost differences that we discussed earlier, including there is a ten and a half million dollar fuel cost return. For advantageous fuel, we collected, um, more fuel than we forecast due to General Burton's team doing a really great job managing that supply portfolio. So you'll see natural gas and electric rates are benefiting from that return of fuel overcollected in fiscal year twenty-five. Here's my favorite slide as an engineer, uh, speaking on financials, uh, in the deck. So this is our income statement, four items presented. Fiscal year twenty-five budget, fiscal year twenty-five year-end forecast, fiscal year twenty-six budget and the variance from budget to budget. At a top-line revenue for total revenues, I'll draw your attention to the two hundred and forty-five point two million, reflecting what we've discussed already on the needs for, uh, the fiscal twenty-five budget. Going down to the important, uh, how we're gonna end up the year and how we'll start the year in twenty-six. The forecast for fiscal year twenty-five is four point four million dollars favorable. We have a four point four million dollar savings over the forecast, uh, for that non-fuel component in fiscal twenty-five. It's a two percent variance on the overall utility budget. For fiscal twenty-six, you'll see intentionally a deficiency of seven million dollars when we get down to that bottom line for fiscal twenty-six. That is intentional and reflects the seven million withdrawal from utility reserves for projects inside the utility systems. Uh, that utility reserve budget is still, um, that balance is still robust and will end the year over fifty million dollars, uh, with reserves still meeting our cash flow requirements and R and R requirements inside that fund. So, uh, very adequately funded for the support of the fiscal twenty-six budget. Debt service coverage, since we have these important folks in the room that are leaning in now and taking a look at what that is. So the forecasted year-end, uh, fiscal twenty-five debt service coverage is two point two three. Fiscal year twenty-six is conservatively estimated at one point three seven. The minimum requirements in our bond covenants are a coverage of, uh, one point one. So we're well above, uh, those minimum targets for fiscal twenty-five and forecasted similarly in fiscal twenty-six. That does conclude the details of the utility budget presentation. Any questions?
No, thank you. Uh, Chris, would you please read resolution six seven seven?
Certainly. A resolution of the Central Florida Tourism Oversight District adopting a tentative utility budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-six and providing an effective date. The Central Florida Tourism Oversight District has set forth the appropriations and revenue estimate for the tentative utility budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-six in the amount of two hundred and forty-five million, one hundred and fifty-one thousand, one hundred and sixty-six dollars.
Thank you. Mr. Payne, do we read it accurately into the record?
Uh, yes.
Do we have any public comment? Do we have any board comment? Do we have a motion to approve item eight point seven, eight, excuse me, eight point three, which is resolution six seven seven?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion, roll call?
Supervisor Ziegler?
Yes.
Vice Chair Anx?
Yes.
Chair Yarborough?
Yes.
Supervisor Workman?
Yes.
Supervisor Gilbert?
Yes.
All right, thank you, Ms. Farrar. I really appreciate it. Um, do we have any other business? I have one reminder, in two weeks, on September twenty-sixth, we will have our final budget hearing at five thirty PM in this room. Again, different time, different day, but, um, hope everybody will be here. Seeing no other business, we'll stand adjourned. The time is five thirty-seven. Thanks so much.